Beautiful Amerenman Elementary, the home of our Bobcats. And before we get into the meeting, the meat of our meeting tonight, I'll turn it over to our Bobcat team, I believe, for our pledge of allegiance. So you all rise and join us. Should we just roll without it?
Sounds great.
Let's join here.
All right.
Okay.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation under God, in the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you everyone for being here tonight. Again, welcome. This is a pretty special meeting for a number of reasons. Obviously, we're all excited about the Bobcat presentation tonight. It's also our last meeting of the year before we head into the holidays and our break. And it's also the last meeting for several of us that have been on the Board of Education for a number of years here, and some of us many years. So, um, big night for us. As we get into things, we'll start with our roll call. I'll turn it over to Ms. Stewart, please.
All right, President Wilson.
Here.
Vice President McIntyre.
Here, good evening.
Uh, Treasurer Campbell Voitel.
Yeah.
Trustee Missurick.
Here.
Trustee Meyer.
Hello, here.
Trustee Prescott.
Hi, everyone.
And Secretary Stewart, here.
Excellent, thank you so much for that. That brings us to the adoption of our agenda. And I'll turn it over to our Vice President, Ms. McIntyre, please.
Okay, I'd like to bring forth motion 56 that the agenda be adopted as presented.
Support.
All right, so we have a motion properly presented by Ms. McIntyre and supported by Ms. Stewart. Any questions or comments about our agenda?
That was Ms. Prescott.
That was Ms. Prescott, all right. Correction, sorry about that. Any questions? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Thank you so much. That brings us to our consent resolutions. This is a long list. Uh, we'll turn it over to Ms. McIntyre again. Do you want to take a drink of water before this?
Oh, this is a long one. I think it goes to letter J. Okay, I'd like to bring forth motion 57 that the board accept the consent agenda items for approval as presented. This includes 5A, minutes of the December 10th, 2024 Board of Education meeting; 5B, minutes of the December 10th, 2024 closed session meeting of the Board of Education; uh, 5C, overnight and/or out-of-state field trip requests. That includes C1, Northville High School cheer competition in Portage, Michigan from February 7th through the 8th, 2025; C2, Northville Varsity Dance Team Regionals in Chicago, Illinois on January 4th, 2025; C3, Northville Varsity Dance Team National Competition in Orlando, Florida from January 28th through the February 3rd, 2025; C4, Northville Middle School Cheer Competition in Frankenmuth, Michigan from January 10th through the 12th, 2025; C5, NHS Model UN Conference in Grand Rapids, Michigan from March 5th through the 8th, 2025; 5D, instructional material purchase for Advanced Placement Environmental Science Course, Environmental Science for the AP textbook; 5E, NHS course name change from Marketing Store Operations 1 to Retail Store Operations and Marketing Store Operations 2 to Marketing Store Operations; 5F, NHS new course offering IB Business Management; 5G, NHS new course offering Unified Physical Education; 5H, Palmer moving contract for $49,104 for Amerenman, Meads Mill, and Northville High School; 5I, three Bluebird, 77 passenger buses totaling $421,605 and 147 passenger unit totaling $129,580; 5J, Northville High School Fire Alarm Change Order for Green Line Electric totaling $83,028.88; and 5K, bill warrants totaling $2676,506.64.
Support.
All right, I believe I heard Mr. Missurick on that one. So we have a motion properly presented by Ms. McIntyre and supported by Mr. Missurick. Uh, this was a long list of items, folks, that you heard here tonight. Things like minutes of past board meetings include, including closed sessions that we've all had a chance to review, uh, prior to coming in tonight. You see this long list of field trips and competitions and things that our students and kids are looking forward to. Um, new courses, new textbooks, new buses. That's something that we do from time to time, right? Um, every, it seems like every year or two, we're, um, upgrading our, our, our bus fleet. Um, things like fire alarm, uh, change orders. These are items that we've, uh, discussed at length in finance committees. So, uh, no need for us to spend a lot of time discussing them tonight. But, uh, just so the folks here in the audience are aware, we do talk about all these items. We've talked about them in previous meetings or we've had a chance to vet them. Any other comments from folks on any of these items? Questions? All right, all those in favor of our consent resolutions?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, our consent resolutions pass. And that brings us to, I believe, our communications. Turn it over to Ms. Stewart, please, our secretary.
All right, we've received, uh, emails at our email address as well as the Northville Youth Network Program Report for November 2024.
Excellent, thank you so much. Any, any notes? There's one, um, item in our communications that I wanted to note. It was an email that we, or a letter, email that we received. I think we talked a little bit about it last week potentially, but we, we wanted to raise it here again tonight. It was, it's a really nice letter, um, several pages from a, an alumni of, uh, I think Amerenman, right? Amerenman and NHS in 2004, someone who is, uh, deeply involved in the sciences. I mean, I'm pretty impressed with the background and the resume and where this person, uh, is working. But just kind of talked about the importance of STEM, referenced a couple of teachers. Um, I know that one teacher is still here, Mrs. Henderson, referencing the, thanking the Alps program, Mr. Ricketts. I don't know if Mr. Ricketts is here any longer. Okay, yep. Um, just noting a number of things, graduated from Michigan, doing a lot of work in STEM and STEAM. And just, there was a quote here that I wanted to, um, just thanking you for the time, thanking us, I guess, uh, for taking time out of our, out of our lives to support NPS and thanking the teachers and everything that, that was, um, you know, in his educational background to support him. And, and basically just appreciating public education and noting that some of the, you know, some of the hurdles that public education faces today. And, um, I really appreciate him calling that out. And it was a really nice letter. Anything else from anyone? All right, well, without further ado, that takes us to the highlight, I think, of the evening, our Amerenman presentation. We'll turn it over to our Bobcats, Ms. Caudill, please.
Well, thank you so much, everyone, for being here tonight. We are excited to share with you, um, and highlight, um, some of the amazing things that are happening here at Amerenman this year. And if you notice, Russell the Bobcat has, um, a special headgear and a magic wand. Um, and board, when you came in, you will find you own had your own magic wand with a saying on it, because you never know when you might need a little magic. So, um, this year, our theme is Once Upon a Magical Year at Amerenman. And our leaders here in a moment are going to share with you how it is we came upon deciding, um, that was what we are going to do this year. And they're also going to be sharing, um, some breakout sessions that you're going to be going that highlight the three areas of focus that we have this year, problem solving, creativity, and imagination. And when we get, and you get into some of these breakout sessions that we have, two of them, um, are similar to what we've done in the past. However, our students wanted to highlight how they've grown from what they've shown you before to what they're doing now. So two of those areas, um, of what they're going to show you happen to around circles and restorative practices of what it looks like after a year in use. Also, with our, um, announcement team showing what they have now started doing, um, some productions involving some green screens. And then last, something new to us, um, is how students are using, um, AI within the classroom. So I am going to turn it over to our student leaders, and they are going to tell us a little bit more about what our night has in store.
Welcome, everyone, to the Amerenman Elementary School. Hi, I'm Winston.
And I'm Matt.
And we are both fifth graders at Amerenman Elementary. We are excited to have you here this evening and be able to share with you some amazing things that are happening here at Amerenman.
This year, our theme is Once Upon a Magical Year. Each year, our theme is voted on by the incoming fifth graders.
With our magical theme, we are celebrating and using problem solving and creativity imagine.
To give you an idea of some of the amazing things we do, we are going to split you up into three breakout.
Each one of you groups will have lead, be led around by three different breakout sessions. You will learn about AI, community, and culture in one of our announcements teams.
Listen carefully to guides to know where to go and the PA for when to switch.
When you are all done, please come back to our cafeteria to wrap things up.
We are going to split you up into your three groups now. If you have a fairy sticker, you can follow the guide with the fairy, um, sign.
If you have a sticker and you have a fairy, please follow our guide here. Everybody else can wait.
I'm gonna guess you want to join this.
So fairies only, please follow our guides, and they will take you where you need to be. Looks like we found that our wands have sound effects. I was gonna, that was a secret surprise. All right. All right, next are our dragons. If you had a dragon sticker, would you please follow our student leaders?
Thank you everyone for coming and seeing a little bit of the magic that happens here at Ammerman. Two things before I turn it over some questions if you have any from our kids here. So two things I'd like to mention. Number one, one of the things that I just keep thinking while we're walking around here is the next time we are here, Ammerman is going to look completely different. For example, the room you are sitting in will be our library come next year. So a lot of changes that actually start in six days from today. So that's the exciting part and I can't wait to share some of those next year with everyone. And lastly, this here on the screen isn't quite a real quote. I adopted it from a quote by James Cameron who, the original quote said, "Magic doesn't come from within a director's mind. It comes from within the hearts of actors." And I went, you know what, that actually, oh, okay. That actually makes a lot of sense if we take out director and actors and add in teachers and students because I think it makes so much sense when we look at it that way. It is our kids that bring the magic and we just kind of wave the magic wand. So I'll turn that over to you guys.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions, comments, board members? Anyone have anything?
So sure, I'll ask a question. So I'm gonna ask it and just have three of you guys respond. But we were playing with the AI tools, asking, you know, questions to help write a story. And I thought it was pretty interesting. It kept asking a lot of questions, but I'm wondering what your thoughts. Do you find that that tool is helpful with you guys writing a story? Well, three of you, any three, doesn't matter.
One, Evelyn, two, Ali, three.
It was helpful because, um, okay, it was helpful because, um, when we were running our story, like sometimes it would, it would import important details for you to put in your story and like... And like, the AI also helps with, like, when you're thinking of ideas for your new story to make. You can like, like, it like forces you to like, tell you about like, what you should do and like how you should do it.
Thank you. Okay, so what I, what was helpful with the AI for me was I had, I always have trouble putting my thoughts onto the paper, just putting my thought. And I, the AI helped me just type, type, type into the bar. And it helped me with my turning point and all, and fights that led up to the turning point. Everything, it just helped me with it, and it just like saved me with my story.
It helped me with my story because when, when I was doing it, I'm not, I'm not that good at writing. So it kind of helped me put like where I needed commas and like periods and just a bunch of like the writing stuff that, just the extra writing stuff that you do. It helped me a bunch with that, yeah.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for that. I just have a question for you about the role of this board is to help make sure the schools run well. And my question for you, and maybe three of you could answer it, is what should we know about how you feel when you come to school here?
Eliana, one, uh, Jada, two, and Maya, three.
So when I go to school, it makes me feel and it makes me feel happy because I know I'll see all my friends. And my wonderful teacher, Ms. Kinsler, she's right back there. And yeah, so I feel happy and stuff.
Uh, I feel really great about going to school. It makes me happy and it helps us in the real world sometimes, real world sometimes.
Who was my number three? Oh, yeah, that's my, Maya.
Um, it makes me feel really good because whenever, like as soon as you walk into the building, you're met with a lot of smiling and helpful faces.
Sure, yeah.
Looks like we're just going down the table. Now, I, I was one of the lucky ones to go into the AI room that was talking about plants and identifying plants. And I think there weren't very many of us that went into that room, but that was really fun. And let's see, so it was Ronan was helping me identify a couple types of cactus. And I'm curious, was it just that specific fifth grade classroom that was working with plants? Or was, I'm sorry, so it was fourth grade, sorry. So was it just that one classroom doing the plants? Or was it all the fourth grade classrooms? So I have a two-part question.
Okay. Well, since, Ronan, since you were there, I'll put Ronan, Kaylee, and Izzy.
So it was for all the fourth grade classrooms?
All the fourth grade?
Um, well, yeah, I think it was.
Okay. Since you already have the microphone, you can keep going with part two. I know part of your answer, but I asked their classroom, did all of their plants survive? So this is part of the second part of the question, Ronan, go ahead.
Um, um, I believe that every class did do plants, but it might have been at a different time.
Got it.
Um, and I think like only two plants have died, either from being kicked or not watered.
Okay.
I think we answered that one.
Okay, okay.
All right, I'll go next, we'll just go in order here. All right, so first of all, thank you so much for the warm welcome. When I walked in, it was a mass of students with stickers, super smiley and happy to be there. It's obvious how much preparation you all did, and parents and teachers and staff, how much preparation went into tonight. It's no small feat to put on something like this, so thank you for having us. I'm blown away, as always, by a few things. One is the circles, your demonstration of circles, right? And I think tonight, the theme was sort of culture. And in just five or 10 minutes, however long we, we spent going around half of our room, we learned about, there was a lot of Scottish representation, I'll say that, in my room. I was one of them. But it was great to hear about Scottish culture, Cornish, Chinese, Indian, German, we heard, maybe some others. In just the span of five minutes, I mean, you kind of go around the world and you just learn a lot about each other and about the world. And I love circles and restorative practices. Technology in the buildings. This is probably the third or fourth opportunity that we have had as a board to see AI in action. I remember seeing, Erin, you're, you know, you did a couple presentations. I've always been blown away by how AI is able to just exponentially increase the speed at which kids are learning, right? When they're doing math problems, we saw this at the middle school. You're, the teachers are able to get real-time feedback as to how, what issues the kids are running into as they're, they're working out the same problem. You can see how these kids are learning how to, to write prompts. It's really fascinating. This is going to totally change the face of education. The green screen technology was really cool. I'm, you guys are really lucky to have these sorts of technologies and be able to be as creative as you are. My question for you, and maybe this is probably just for one person, but as I was walking out of, I think it was the, the green screen room, I passed by a sculpture, I think, that was made out of pizza cartons, containers. Anybody explain what that was? Go ahead.
In STEAM class, the second graders in Ms. Mantrax's class are building a snowman sculpture out of pizza boxes. It's part of our STEAM.
Very interesting, very cool. Well, it's, this is where my kids, are they, are they used pizza boxes, do you know? Good question, probing questions, yeah. No, this is where my kids went to elementary school. This is an awesome building, an awesome place. It's bringing back great memories. There's also been a ton of change. The library looks very, very different. And we're with you. We're really looking forward to how the bond changes things here in Ammerman. So thank you for having us.
Yeah, I'm glad to go next. And yes, thank you so much for having us, and I will not miss the rattling. I think it's hard to hear presentations and that kind of thing, especially with a whole room here filled with kids. I would imagine that would be even more challenging. I really enjoyed the AI presentation about the roller coaster. So I was really curious to know if anybody who was, who has done that project, if you've ridden a roller coaster before, and if you haven't, would you be more likely or less likely to ride a roller coaster? Because I thought it was really cool, the things that I learned that, that our little teacher taught us is the way that you can kind of twist the foam piece so that the people stay in the roller coaster and they can still do the spinning part of the coaster ride. Thought that was kind of cool, that they wouldn't fly out. But I'm curious to know, if you have ridden a roller coaster before, would you ride one again? And if you haven't, would you be more likely to ride one now? Or, or you still don't want to ride a roller coaster?
Have you answered one yet?
If I have ridden a roller coaster, they are really fun, but sometimes it depends like how steep it is or how, like how it's twisted or how reliable it is, just like how we did with our roller coaster contest. I definitely, I definitely would water ride a roller coaster again. It's just, if I had to choose between a roller coaster or something else, I don't think I would choose roller coasters.
Do you want another answer? You go.
Or, or I would love to know the name of the roller coaster that you made for the project, because that was a cool, a cool part of the experiment, too.
Do you remember that, Zara?
Our roller coaster was called the Erie Express. I was on the same team as Kaylee. It was really fun to build it with a team. We, in the beginning, our team had only three people, while the rest had four. And then our absent partner came in. And so if, at the, on the last days, we had four people. It was much easier when Ms. Vertrie's announced that we could have duct tape on race day. We really needed that because our, our corkscrew kept falling apart. And it was just really helpful.
Awesome, thank you.
The secret ingredient that makes it all work, I love it. Well, I, I, I have to say that every presentation that I was present for today, tonight, was just fabulous. I was fascinated by the green screen and the video team and the, I think the impetus to apply for an NEF grant, to attract some more equipment that allows you to really expand your creativity and your options. So we're very fortunate to have a Norphil Educational Foundation here that not only supports our, our teachers' creativity, but also our students. And I'm very curious, I've never really seen that. You know, sometimes you can see the green screen on TV when the, when the weatherman is pointing and there's no map there, it's just a green screen. So can you tell me, one or two of you, just what, what has been the most surprising creative opportunity that you've experienced with this new equipment?
Um, we, well, first of all, we get to add a background other than just what we're filming behind. And when we were starting to figure out how to use it, it was really hard. But now, there's so many opportunities we have to make our videos better with the green screen and maybe make different types of videos, too.
You can write different kinds of stories because you can create settings that you never could create before, I would guess. So bravo to you. And I also understand that it, it's, it's an opportunity that comes to you during lunch and recess. So that, you know, I, I really respect the fact that you're, you're making a sacrifice, really, to take advantage of this opportunity. So it's really, I admire you, and the creative opportunities are, seem like the sky's the limit. So keep it up, it's great.
Well, here we are at our last meeting of the year, and I honestly can't think of a better place to have it. I'm so glad to be here. I have to say I have moving on, on, on the brain. Last meeting of the year, we have some wonderful members of our board who are moving on after this meeting. My son, my youngest son and my, both my children went here, is a senior. So I have a question for the fifth graders. I don't want to rush it for your parents, but as you think about moving on to middle school, I'm curious about what, perhaps what grade you decided that you wanted to be part of the lighthouse team. What made you sign up? And what have you gotten out of it? What, what has it meant to you to have that kind of a role here at Ammerman?
That's a really great question. All right, anybody? Okay.
What decided for me was to give up my recess and lunchtime was I came to Ammerman in third grade, when that's when you're allowed to start like doing it. It's third through fifth. I came here at third grade when I went to the ALPS program. And I was really excited to do it because you get to kind of film like little movies, basically, and have fun with your friends. And it like, doesn't take up that much time. And it's just really fun to see yourself on the announcements, I think.
Like Ava, I also came to Ammerman in third grade for the ALPS program. And when I heard about like Bobcat Boost, I was really excited because it was like a place where I could like express my creativity and also like use teamwork.
And then if it's okay, can I have a third grader, who this is their first year, as why they decided? Oh. Winston, do you want to say anything, or do you want me to ask a third grader? You do? Okay, because I'll have you answer than I was gonna have Gigi if she wanted to say something. Are you okay saying why you joined the team, or no? Okay, we'll pass.
The reason I joined is because I just wanted to, so every year, there was an endangered animal thing where you could, um, there was a bunch of animals that were endangered and you could choose which animal you would like to help, um, help like and not be endangered anymore. And then it was like a vote, and then I was like, the Bobcat Boost people are like, house team, they could help out, like they could choose the animals. So I got to do that, and that was really fun. That's why I wanted to do it.
Okay, Gigi, are you sure? Okay, so why did you join Bobcat Boost as a third grader?
I joined Bobcat Boost as a third grader bec- I've always seen on the announcements and stuff, um, all the kids and on the announcements, and it looked really fun, and I wanted to be part of it. So every year, I just was waiting for the chance to finally be able to do what I've always looked up to do when I was in the younger grades.
Well, thank you for sharing that. I think I, you all play a very important part in making Ammerman such a wonderful school community that it is. So thank you for going into the unknown and trying this to, you know, as you just shared, as a third grader, making it exciting for other students in the school, making everyone feel like they're part of the team of Ammerman. So I really appreciate that.
Dr. Weber, anything?
Curiosity and courage, wonderful things. Where's Kaylee at? Raise your hand up, Kaylee. Kaylee, you, if you want to, are gonna be an amazing teacher one day. I had the privilege of having you at our AI station for the roller coaster, and your cadence and especially patience with a struggling learner like myself was fantastic. So thank you for that. And to the whole room, a little different. So a few years ago, we started a tradition of taking a picture at our building visits. And tonight, I know, and I've seen several family members, spouses, partners, kids. And for the board members who are outgoing, I think it'd be nice if you'd like to, to join us in the picture behind everybody. And you don't have to be in the picture if you don't want to, that's okay as well. What we like to do is to get all the kids, as well as parents, relatives, and so on, and then our outgoing board members' families, perhaps. And we just all line up behind here and we take a nice big picture of it. So if you'd like to do that, Ms. Caddell, thank you so much. And to the Ammerman staff, wow, 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 just leaving here ebullient. Thank you.
Come on up, come on up. Erin, that's you, too, buddy.
Oh, my gosh.
You can go all the way around. Yeah, you can talk into that.
Yeah, you can go around back here, and you guys can all come back here.
There you go.
And over here.
Errol, scoot down. There are more people in the photo than taking this.
Come on in, come on in, come on in, and, uh, my god, good luck.
Guys are ridiculous.
You gonna be able to guess all? All right.
Keep smiling.
On three, Bobcats. One, two, three, Bobcats! Thank you all. All right.
The hammer be like, we're doing the court.
That's right. He gets.
Good thing, Sarah. That worked out even better.
You only got seven.
Yes, ABC.
Or the...
Yes.
I mean...
Yes.
Do you want to...
Do, 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 do.
You want to do...
Um...
What did you do?
It's all good.
Yes.
Your public comment for the teacher here, the first public comment.
Okay. Okay.
All right. You guys all squared away?
Yes. Thank you.
All right. Moving right along here. We ready to go? That brings us to our superintendent's report. Dr. Weber, you want to take it away?
Ah, yes, President Wilson. We're going to start with the above and beyond the Call of Duty Awards. And this is something that the board has done for some time, and it really is a wonderful thing. And I know each of you kind of arm wrestle for the people you're going to wad. So whoever's first? I believe we have Cynthia first.
Do we have a place that we can just stand?
Nope. For the picture, there's a black piece of tape here. So after the beautiful things are right about you, then the two of you will come up here, and Ms. Pack will take your picture.
Mrs. Manjack, how lovely.
I could come out there, but I'm delighted to be here.
Yeah, they won't be there, even unless you got one of the microphones.
I am pleased to represent the board in recognizing this nomination in your name that hit... Can you hear me?
All right, good night.
There, hello. Hello.
There you go. That'll work.
Good evening, everyone. Mrs. Manjack is well-known and well-loved in this school, although I know that you have taught in other schools, as I was informed by Melissa. But as the board collectively, we're just so pleased to...
You need some magic.
All right. So you were nominated for this recognition by both a student and a parent. And so I would like to read the comments.
Manjack, above and beyond. Every single day. She was my teacher last year in second grade. And this year, I came to school, and I have her as a third grade elf. Mrs. Manjack has come to our shuttle bus to see us a year later after we left her in second grade. She is at the show bus, checking on us and giving us hugs and caring about us when we go on to our next class. Venture. The nomination came from a parent. Thank you, Cindy, for all of the patience that you have shown us, new parents, trying to understand the one-two split. So not only is she a practice student, but a parent, and all that it entails and how best support I give at home. Our son has been eager after the first year of school, excited for the opportunity to be his last with second graders. Good kids.
And to have a teacher who challenges him in a productive and caring manner and recognizes the daily wins. We have felt welcomed from day one and are very grateful for a teacher who cares so much for her students, both past and current students. So... Thank you. Because this has not only been my current granddaughter's school, it's also the school of my two children, so I'm like a second-generation Ameren Bobcat. But so I get to make the presentation to a second person in the school who could not be more important to everybody from top to bottom, and that is Mrs. Caddell. I had to arm wrestle for this one, too. Two people have nominated you, one a parent and one a colleague. The parent says, "My daughter has shared with me that Mrs. Caddell reads stories to all the children about how everyone is different, and to be kind and to respect differences. I feel this makes a huge impact on how all of the children treat each other in this school. There's always a sense of respect, and this little action of reading stories means the world to me and my family." So examples of respect is being important to the culture of the school that you create here and make safe spaces for kids. The second nominee nominator was a colleague, and she says, "Mrs. Caddell is an amazing leader for Ameren. She has high expectations for both her staff and students, fostering an environment where everyone is encouraged. And she is capable, relatable, and present. She sees every child, she knows, and she supports. Mrs. Caddell has an uncanny ability to know and remember each student, identifying their strengths and areas for growth. She has a listening ear and is positive and supportive." So thank you, Mrs. Caddell. What a school. What a school here.
So I'm going to go next. And I have an award for Hannah Kinsler, a third-grade teacher here. And this is kind of a cool, two parents have written in about Hannah. And it's really great when someone writes in about some kids who are struggling and how a teacher really made the difference and kind of changed their life. And that's what I think a lot of us remember. There were certain grades we were in. We have that one teacher that somehow changed our position and changed our way we went. So I'm going to read from two different parents here on Hannah, and then I got to give her a big hug. So first one writes, "As returning family to Ameren after being out of state for two years, Hannah went above and beyond as a new teacher to ensure that my daughter felt comfortable and confident as she started her new school. My daughter struggled in the past year with feeling included and seen for who she is. And Hannah has made sure that she's shining right from the beginning. As a new teacher, we love the energy she brings to her students, as it is evident that she cares for her class and her success." This next one kind of really hits at home to my heart as well. I'm not going to cry, though. But it says, "In the short time my son has been in her class, I've had more communication with a teacher than I've ever had in any previous year's classes. My son had historically been written off as the class clown, and his learning difficulties not addressed in a meaningful manner. Ms. Kinsler has proven that with a little direct attention, consistency, and close collaboration with parents, success is not only possible but can be achieved. My son is finally beginning to excel." That says just so much about...
That says so much about a teacher who can make the kids start and get them off of
I get to give the next award, but really quickly, I want to give a shout out to people
my crap, like, all the ghetto situations, but... My uncle's going to disenter.
in the audience, I think, came up with the ABCD idea. We've been doing it for four, five, six years, something like that. So I think they know who they are, and it's nice to see you. And thank you for working with the board to lift teachers and staff up and knowing that these matters moments matter to these folks. Next point, Ms. Caddell. You're a very special building leader. I've had the chance to be in early childhood education, Silver Springs, Ameren, Meads, and the high school. And they've all got incredibly special leaders. But I just really want to say, from our personal family, thank you for what you have done individually. The comment about you knowing the skills and the needs of each kid is 100% true. I get to lift up, and I'm so pleased to get to lift up Ms. Winnie, and I'll have her come up in a minute. She was recommended by two different colleagues. And the kinds of comments that they made include that she's a remarkable contributor, truly a treasure, professional, positive, always greeting someone with a smile. She works late. If she doesn't know how to do something, she finds a way. She goes above and beyond, quote, "for everyone with everything," colleagues, students, families, and "for the whole of Ameren." She is kind and helpful in everything. She has a way of making everything beautiful and making everyone feel beautiful. And the kind of transformative comment that I think kind of, you know, goes to all of that, she has transformed our school into its warm and inviting environment with her great style and endless talents. So for a contributor whose energy and synergy and efficiency have just taken the team to the next level, Ms. Winnie. I'm excited to have the honor to support and give some accolades to Ms. Willerer. These awards were nominated to Ms. Willerer by two parents. And the first parent says, "It is clear how much Mrs. Willerer loves teaching, but I don't think she fully understands how much a positive learning environment it is that she provides for her students. She is so nurturing and has allowed my son to fall in love with school again. She has helped foster his self-confidence and self-esteem. Every day, he comes home with a smile and a story about Mrs. Willerer." Love that. And the second parent says, and we know this is so true, "Mrs. Willerer cares deeply about developing the whole child. She understands that education is not just about academics, but also about nurturing the social, emotional, and personal growth of her students. She brings a contagious enthusiasm to the classroom every day, creating a joyful and encouraging environment for her students. Her compassion for all students is evident in the way she listens to their concerns, celebrates their successes, and supports them through challenges." Thank you for everything you do, Mrs. Willerer, and for continuing to raise the bar, also for all of the teachers, including your daughter. It was a joy a couple weeks ago to celebrate your daughter, so now we get to celebrate you.
All right. Well, I have the privilege of shining a light on Ms. McMaster. She's one of the kindergarten teachers here. She's been a kindergarten teacher here for sort of as long as I can remember. When one of my daughters started here, they... I'll never forget, I think it was sitting in this room doing the kindergarten presentation. It was, my daughter had Mrs. Thomas, Mrs. Charbonneau, but I definitely remember the whole kindergarten team. And two parents have nominated Mrs. McMaster, and I'll read what they had to say about her. "What sets Mrs. McMaster apart is her unwavering positivity. She approaches each day with a smile and an encouraging word, creating a warm and welcoming environment for all her students. Her commitment to supporting the growth of the whole child is truly remarkable. She understands that education extends beyond academics and works tirelessly to nurture the social, emotional, and personal development of her students. And the second parent simply stated, "Mrs. McMaster helped our daughter transition from daycare to kindergarten and brought joy to our entire family. So I hope you'll all join me in honoring Mrs. McMaster." Come on up.
All right. I get to wrap it up with the last one tonight. Mr. Keith Gall, a fifth-grade teacher here at Ameren, has been nominated by a colleague who said, "Keith's enthusiasm for teaching and learning shines through in all that he does. His students love to be in his classroom and respond beautifully to his personal love of learning." Is Mr. Gall here tonight?
Yes.
Awesome.
All right. I believe that concludes our ABCD awards. What did we decide on next?
So we're going to do just a quick report on the transition for Erin, and then acknowledgement of three board members. And then I know we have a lot of people here for public comments, so a pleasure of the board as far as having them speak, perhaps, and then you guys could speak about each other, whatever sounds good. So, Mr. Baughman, I promised you I wouldn't, so I won't. But we do know there's a transition coming up, and just wanted to offer you an opportunity, you and Dr. Brock, to maybe say a couple words about the planning that's went into that and any, of course, words that you'd like to share with us. Thank you.
So we've been working hard over the last few weeks to put together a transition plan and to work directly together, along with other members of the administrative team, central office, OSS, and coaches as well, to begin thinking about the distribution of work and to make sure that the great things that are happening continue. Dr. Brock and I have met individually. We have worked on some planning pieces and making sure things are wrapped up that can be wrapped up and be done, getting ahead of some of the tasks for later this year that we might have waited on otherwise, but we're getting those taken care of. And so we've got a couple more meetings set this week, including some time with our administrative assistants to think about making sure we have everything in line and in order. And of course, as we've shared before, certainly available for consultation when needed for things that come up over the next rest of the school year. So we've been doing a lot of work to put that together, and we've been very clear in the pieces we've been building of all the things that need to be addressed and who will address those things and who will be the administrative assistants supporting in that area as well. Some of that has meant adding to some of the leadership opportunities we've been giving principals to build their own strengths and talents, but also helping to transition Dr. Brock into those roles to provide that support and leadership. So, do you think you want to add?
No, no. I think it's gone really well. As Erin said, we've met with, you know, departments that we oversee, as well as our administrative team, who has been amazing. We work very closely with Tanya and Teresa, and we're lucky to have them. And I think, you know, as Erin said, a lot of it is that proactive planning piece, things that I do on my own, things that we partner together, and things that he has done on his own where I, you know, am learning about. So it's gone really well. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get into the recognition, if we could bring up the next slide, please. We're going to take a little bit of...
So we've been working hard over the last few weeks to put together a transition plan and to work directly together along with other members of the administrative team, central office, OSS, and coaches as well, to begin thinking about the distribution of work and to make sure that the great things that are happening continue. Dr. Brock and I have met individually. We have worked on some planning pieces and making sure things are wrapped up that can be wrapped up and be done, getting ahead of some of the tasks for later this year that we might have waited on otherwise, but we're getting those taken care of. And so we've got a couple more meetings set this week, including some time with our administrative assistants to think about making sure we have everything in line and in order. And of course, as we've shared before, certainly available for consultation when needed for things that come up over the next rest of the school year. So we've been doing a lot of work to put that together, and we've been very clear in the pieces we've been building of all the things that need to be addressed and who will address those things and who will be the administrative assistants supporting in that area as well. Some of that has meant adding to some of the leadership opportunities we've been giving principals to build their own strengths and talents, but also helping to transition Dr. Brock into those roles to provide that support and leadership. So, do you think you want to add?
No, no, I think it's gone really well. As Erin said, we've met with, you know, departments that we oversee as well as our administrative team, who has been amazing. We work very closely with Tanya and Teresa, and we're lucky to have them. And I think, you know, as Erin said, a lot of it is that proactive planning piece, things that I do on my own, things that we partner together, and things that he has done on his own where I, you know, am learning about. So it's gone really well. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get into the recognition, if we could bring up the next slide, please, we're going to take a little bit of a trip down memory lane here. And what I want to say simply is gratitude is when memory is stored in the heart and not in the mind. And the amount of memories you've made in people's hearts here and in kids and joy is something I know many people are grateful for. So, Jim, 12 years of service on the Northville Public Schools Board of Education. Gosh, what's next Tuesday night going to be like for you guys? Serving as president, vice president, secretary, treasurer, and currently serving as trustee. During tenure, you served as a liaison to the finance subcommittee, served on the district curriculum committee, and served as a liaison to the Northville Parks and Recreation Commission and the Legislative Action Network. Board representative to Ammerman Elementary, Bob Pitts. Advocate and supporter of STEAM opportunities and the RoboStings. Countless Board of Education meetings, committee meetings, forums, district and community events, with a continuous focus on student learning for the children of Northville as well as our greater community. Served on the Board of Education of Northville Public Schools along with fellow board members through the challenging times of COVID-19 and that pandemic, and navigated unprecedented issues facing school districts across the community. I'm going to miss your ability to cut through the stuff and get right at it. I have some gifts for you three, so I'll give those to you after I read. And then for folks in public comment, I know that we'll go ahead and read. I don't know, Lindsay, do you have the cards? Okay. And if there's anybody in the room who came in who would like to speak but hasn't supplied a card yet, Ms. Peck has those for you. Okay, let's go to Ms. Prescott, please. So Sarah, I like to affectionately refer to you as the barrister because of your legal trade, which has come in exceptionally well in your thinking. But eight years of service on the Northville Public Schools Board of Education, serving as president, vice president, secretary, and currently serving as trustee. During your tenure, you served as liaison, several subcommittees, rock star on policy, frankly, in communications as well, served on the Downtown Development Authority as well, served as board representative to Meads Mill in Silver Springs, two places I know that are close to you, served as president of the Board of Education during the district's first superintendent search in almost a decade. Countless Board of Education meetings, committee meetings, forums, district and community events, with a continuous focus on student learning for the children of Northville as well as our greater community, and that's always been in your heart. And while I have only known you for about three years, it shines very brightly. Served on the Board of Education of Northville Public Schools along with fellow board members through, and this is of note because this was a very difficult time, and for a few people who were on the board then as well, you know exactly what I'm saying. So thank you for that and your ability to say the right thing at that right time is going to be missed. And you have a fan group out here. Giving you some love, and I think we got those pictures that I've just sent the board that we all took as well, so please share it with your fan group. I think they're going to want them. Thanks, Sarah. Lindsay, four years of service on the Northville Public Schools Board of Education, serving as vice president, trustee, and currently serving as president. During your tenure, you served as a liaison to the communications subcommittee and served on the finance subcommittee and served as the Northville Education Foundation representative. Served as the board representative to Hillside Middle School. Advocate and supporter of New Hope Center for Grief. Really, one of the first things that blew my mind when I came here was the first July in seeing sitting board members give two days for a grief camp. And a lot of people can talk the talk, but I get to serve beside seven people who walk the walk and give their time, and it's a real pleasure. But that was one of the things of note that I remembered, like, wow, two full days committed to that. Countless Board of Education meetings, committee meetings, forums, district and community events, with a continuous focus on student learning for all of our kids. And you as well had the distinct everlasting memory of serving on a board of education during COVID. What I really appreciated about you is, and for those of you understanding engines, I've said this to you before, it's like you're a diesel engine in the sense that you sit back, you take notes, you kind of put things together, you get up to speed, and then find a way to kind of weave everything together at the end of a meeting or something and help to really help us understand it. So that will be missed as well. And I'm going to go ahead and give you your gifts, and I think if you want to go ahead and queue up the folks on deck to say hopefully nice things about Thurgia, I'm going to guess that's the case.
And for those speaking, we have lights down here.
Right. So this is officially, thank you so much, wow. This is officially our first of two opportunities for public comment. I have four cards here. I'll tell you who's up and in what order. Mr. Marty Testaseka first, Mr. Matt Wilk second, Ms. Angela J. for third, and Mr. Roland Wong fourth. And I don't want to have to remind anyone, three minutes.
Our buzzer is super loud.
Thank you. I'm Marty Testaseka, a Northville resident, a huge supporter of the Northville School Board for the last 14 years. Four and a half years ago, Lindsay Wilson calls me the day before filing in July, filing says, "I want to run for school board." And I said, "First off, are you nuts?" Secondly, I said, "It would be my pleasure." I couldn't think of a better person that could leave a better fingerprint on four years in a district that excels, continues to excel. And so we ran a great campaign and he won. And so here at his last meeting, I was there when he got sworn in by Megan outside of the building because of COVID. So this being your last meeting, I'm here on behalf of myself and the 18,612 people who voted for you to thank you for your four years of commitment, dedication, wisdom, and leadership. You navigated tumultuous times in the district with COVID and post-COVID and the bond, and they should use the bond money to actually buy better microphones, but no, so you should be proud of what you've accomplished. You've graduated 2,600 students from Northville High School in the four years, my son being one of them. And Lindsay is directly responsible for my son going to a Big Ten school. He encouraged him, and I'm proud to say that Enzo, in his junior year, had broke college at Michigan State, and he four-pointed this past semester in accounting. So, and it came full circle, she left, but Cindy Manjack was Enzo's kindergarten teacher at Silver Springs in 2010. So the, this board, the district survives board members as they come and they go. It's just a testament to the commitment, and you've all done a wonderful job. But Lindsay, congratulations. And if you in the future are rethinking about maybe running for school board again, don't call me.
Thank you, Mr. Testaseka. All right, next, Wilk, up as promised, Matt Wilk.
Good afternoon, or good evening. I rise to thank Sarah Prescott and Jim Missur for their service to the community. Ladies first, we'll start with Sarah. You may not know that the reason why Sarah was burdened with the board was because I cast the tie-breaking vote in her favor to put her on the board. I don't think she will ever forgive me, but the community is better off. I use Sarah as a great example because I tell people, Sarah and I probably have never voted for the same person for an election. But what we did on the board demonstrated that this is not a partisan thing, this is a bipartisan thing, it's all about the kids. The example that I recall was the bluest eye, where we set a record, where we sent 400 people away from the board meeting, and everybody hated the decision we made. Her most important job was to trust but verify, you know, the old Reagan saying, and I wrote, "Whoa, be the professional who slipped shoddy work in front of her." Sarah, you are intellectually peerless. Maybe, maybe, when your daughter gets older, she'll catch you. I've never known anyone at that level. No other description than that Northville Public Schools would be worse off by her not being on the board. Thank you for what you've done, my friend. Onto Jim Missurick, steadfast champion of the district. His service dates to 2010. If you think COVID was a rough time, talk about 2010, 2011, when we were just about out of money. Seen some tough times, let's, here's to hoping it doesn't repeat itself. He always put the process first because the process builds buy-in with the community. When you make a decision and you go and you honor the process, the community will buy it even if it's not exactly what they want. Provide a detailed financial analysis to the district. I hope someone of the new board picks up that mantle and runs with it. What he would like to do is take a pause and think things through. That was not my instinct on the board, but I learned from him. He was like the steady hand of a captain on the ship's wheel, and I hope the new board follows along. This is an ideologically diverse community. The board should follow because the public is watching. Happy to know that he now has grandparent duty, and I know the kids will do great under his watch as the 7,000 kids every year did when he was on the board. From the community and parents and former board members, I thank you for your service.
Thank you, Matt. Ms. Angela Jaffer.
Good evening. Angela Jaffer, Northville resident as well, former board member, served with Mr. Wilk and Roland, and I served with all three outgoing board members at different times during my term. And I'd like to thank all three of you, obviously, for your incredible service, starting with Jim Missurick, my board buddy, I think we sat next to one another. Jim, what really stands out in my mind about you is your ability to build camaraderie. You always emphasize to us as board members that regardless of where we stood on our viewpoints, it was always important to be united and be a united front and move on with the decisions that we made. And I think serving during a difficult time like COVID made that mindset and that mantra very important, and I respect you for that and appreciate that very much. Also served with Jim on the finance committee, and you know what I'm going to say next, right? There's only 100% of the budget. So Jim and I both worked at Ford Motor Company at one point or another, and that was what, how we were taught, so very, very relatable. I'm going to miss, or this district is going to miss, your incredible knowledge, experience, and the practicality and logic that you bring to the board. So I appreciate your service. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Sarah Prescott, my friend, my confidant, I think Matt put it perfectly, and I can't repeat it that way, but they say if you're the smartest person in the room, you're in the wrong room. I'm not sure what room you can sit in that you can say that. You're an incredible critical thinker, but you do it in a way that's very compassionate, and you care about kids and all kids. You care about this community, the greater good of this community. What I think about when I think of you, Sarah, is the quote about seeing into the future and standing on the shoulder of giants. And the footprint that you've left in this district is something that is forever, we're forever indebted to you. So the incredible amount of work, talent, and expertise that you bring to the board with grace, compassion, and kindness, I guess there aren't enough words for me to really pull out of the depth of my heart to thank you for your work and your service, and most of all, your friendship. And I appreciate you so much. Thank you, Sarah. You're going to be so missed, and I love you. Lindsay, Lindsay reached out to me too, Marty. Thank you for roping me in.
We can make an exception.
One second.
No, Ms. Jaffer, you've noticed the board president said this time we'll make an exception because it's about him.
Thank you. Lindsay, I wanted to thank, I would like to thank you for your service. I'd like to thank your family, but they're not here this evening, but you have an amazing family and a support group that I think bring a level of, a level of experience, but also a perspective to the board that is so special for the district. And I appreciate you, I appreciate your service, and I appreciate your approachability, you're very personable, and you care very deeply about kids in this community. And I know that we're going to see more of you in some capacity or another because we're going to find another role and a way for you to serve because of how much you've poured into this district. One other thing, and I'm done, I'm sorry. I think it's important to note that Lindsay did jump into this role during a very difficult, adverse time in the history of this district, and for that, I appreciate and respect you very much. Thank you.
Next up, a man who needs no introduction, but we will anyway, Roland Wong.
Thank you very much. I just want to just spread kudos all over the place and just congratulate Dr. Brock. I think curriculum's in good hands. And to Erin, just, all of the stuff I know about AI is through meetings, over AI through Erin. So really, congratulations and best wishes for going to Michigan Virtual. And I want to just laud James and Sarah and Lindsay. It was just such a collegial experience, serving with all of you. Jim, you have such an analytical and financial acumen that it's just hard to describe, just knowing everything, all the details. It's a matter of reliance upon your ability in the financial sphere. And Sarah, a great legal mind, usually taking the lead in terms of analysis, not always agreeing with me on the legal stuff, but your leadership was just excellent. And Lindsay, you've been a great leader, and, you know, from time to time, I've picked your brain about particular things. You have a great analytical mind. And so just collectively, it was a great collegial and intellectual experience. So thank you so much for a job well done.
Next up, Mr. J.J. Prescott.
Thank you, Sarah. I love you, we love you. We're so proud of you and the time you spent on the board. It's been a great nine years. I know that being on the board takes a lot of time. Thank you, all of you, for everything you do. Our family knows more than most how much time you spend, and it has been totally worth it. We also are very happy to have you back on Tuesday night, and that you will be taking a leadership role on the home board again, and we're excited about that. I want to take just a moment to thank the board for taking care of her. I spent a lot of time, and, you know, I don't know, I don't know what this would have been like without all the trust and the gratitude that I know she has to you guys. So, so thank you very much, and I won't see you next Tuesday because we'll probably be doing something, something else. Thank you.
All right, that's all the cards we have. That doesn't close your opportunity. If you have comments you'd like to make, going once, going twice, all right, that will close. Oh, here we go. Come on up, yeah? Take your time.
Hi, I'm Rachel Missurick. This is my wonderful father right here. And I just wanted to make a quick word that my father started this when I was in first grade, and this has always been about not just my education, but bigger for the community. I graduated from Northville Schools in 2021, and he has continued, even on Tuesday nights when I try to call him from Ohio State, he's, "Sorry, Rich, can't talk, I'm at the board meetings." And I just wanted to say, as your daughter, how proud I am of you to be able to call you my father.
Damn, I can feel one coming.
And just to see how this has always been bigger than you and how you've supported me in this district, and now I actually get to hang out with you on Tuesday nights, even though I live 200 miles away. And on to the next, as I close out my college career, and where we go. Love you.
All right, I think that's from the public. Open it up for board, to board members here, if you have any comments.
I would love to get mine over with because I am going to cry, and I'm not going to apologize for it. I have the Kleenex. Moses has got a head start on me. Okay, so forgive me this me, this might take a few minutes. Lindsay, taking on the job of president for two years was an endeavor I didn't fully appreciate at first. Doing this speaks to your dedication to this district and your colleagues. You handle difficult situations with a balance of grace and directness, which is difficult to do. You have put us back on track when we have gone sideways and maintained a long-term, forward-looking perspective, even when we're bogged down with the task at hand. I will miss your notebooks. I have never known anyone to utilize a notebook like you, and I look forward to your autobiography. Please say good things. Jim, the historical knowledge you've brought to this board has been crucial. You were part of a team who brought this district through very difficult times, and I believe that plays an important role still. While we shouldn't live in the past, the lessons learned, you need to be utilized. Your emphasis on process is likewise a guiding principle that I feel strongly about, and I appreciate that we could always count on you to emphasize it. I realize that you didn't vote for me, and if I ran again, you probably wouldn't. But the truth is, I agree with you nine times out of 10, and that is because you always put the kids and district first, and that is not partisan. Whether this district is red or blue or purple, I hope your worry beads can rest a little easier, knowing that you've done so much for this district, and it will carry on for years to come.
Sarah, there are people I feel so greatly to simply have crossed paths with, with even just for a little while, and for me, that is you. You are a force of nature with a rare set of gifts and talents. If you wanted to, you could serve on this board for another 40 years, because I know the community recognizes what a gem you are and how lucky we have been to have you. Sitting across this table from you and sometimes wearing similar clothing has been one of my favorite things. When you do your last show in Vancouver, I will be buying a ticket in the front row because there's nothing like watching you in action. They say there's no surety in life but change, and here we are at a crossroads. I've been thinking a lot about how the five of you must have felt when Melissa and I rolled on. I'm excited to see what the next two years bring, but darned if this doesn't pinch a little bit. I want the three of you to sincerely know that while you may not be sitting here, the principles, characters, and standards you have brought to this board will stay on. The impact you've had on this district, this community, and most importantly, on Northville's children, in both, in ways both large and small, continues. None of you did this for the glory, which is good because there isn't any, but I hope you know how important your work has been, and we are so very thankful.
I actually thought I was going to be last, but it seems to have a logic here, the way we're moving through this. I, I like to take stock, and I reflected really on the, the composition of our board and our, the ability of our board to be an effective governing body because of the three leaders that we have had sitting on the, at this table with us. You helped us be our best, and there might be moments, as you reflect, that you wonder why you originally even signed up for the job, maybe it comes to mind, or when you did, you know, and when we took the step to offer ourselves and, and service to others when, when that moment was for you. But I remember, as I'm taking stock, that the best of times that you, you brought us to in this table was when we were successful in embracing our humility. And that means that despite we knew, we knew that what we brought and had to give was always going to be better at the table when it was reshaped and discussed by our colleagues. Our, our curiosity and open-mindedness that helped all of us stay open and listen and learn, you taught us our empathy, to use empathy for one another, and everyone else sitting in this common room, all doing their best for the children and for the community. And when the last meeting ends, you might have a fleeting thought, what difference did I make? Was I able to achieve my, my hopes and dreams in my time of service? For me, this is how I would answer, that there were so many, many big and small examples of the critical differences that each of you made on a very long continuum of work. But for me, I will always remember you, each of you, for, in your own way, repeatedly turning, looking back, and throwing an arm out to those coming behind you, and pulling us forward with your experience and your knowledge. And you were selfless, you were generous, and you were patient with us, with the new members. And you left the best of you ingrained in us for that generosity. And we will continue that work with those, with those learnings and moments ingrained in us. And when our time comes to pass the torch, may we too rise to the call of your generous servant leadership, as we have learned it from you in the last two years. So I thank you for that, and I pray peace and health for all three of you.
First, I'm going to start with what could have been a public comment online, but we, we don't have Suzanne Lynn with us, but she really wanted me to send this. So pretend she's here in the room with us. She says, "Dear Sarah, Jim, and Lindsay, wish I could be there in person to celebrate you this evening." We should have brought her in, that would have been so fun. "But I'm grateful to Lisa for channeling me across the miles. And to start, I'm so very grateful to each of you for your dedication and service to the Northville community over the years. You've been a part of monumental moments in Northville Public Schools, bidding a fond farewell to Mary Kay Gallagher, welcoming RJ Weber, and leading the district through the challenges of a global pandemic. You've ushered the district through bonds and renovations and a new middle school. By Suzanne's admittedly rough calculations, the three of you have collectively read over 6,000 pages of board materials, attended close to 600 board meetings and 300 committee meetings, participated in countless events, graduations, PTA meetings, superintendent evaluations, and workshops. To each of you, Suzanne sends her deepest gratitude for the work you've done. Your leadership has been nothing short of remarkable. Sarah, thank you for your guidance when I was considering running and for continuing to be a wonderful mentor, friend, and colleague. You've poured your heart and soul into this work, and I'm so grateful for you. Jim, you were a trusted advisor and steady voice of reason when, when you and Suzanne ran together six years ago." She says, "I so admired your approach as board president, especially during challenging discussions about Main Street School. I was ever grateful for your financial acumen and all of the time I served alongside you. Lindsay, your leadership, thoughtfulness, and humor have been invaluable to the board, particularly as you stepped onto the board during such a critical and precarious time. This feels like the end of an era for the board, and I can't overstate how much I've learned from each of you and how deeply I appreciate you." Suzanne says, "Go forth, friends, and conquer, or simply enjoy your free Tuesday evenings for a while. With deepest gratitude, Suzanne." Okay, I also have my own, so apologies, team, for taking extra time, but. So the four of us ran in a really crowded, this is from me. We ran in a really crowded field. There were like nine people, 10 people that we were running against. It was the middle of the pandemic, and I think each of us jumped into that thinking, oh my gosh, what's the lifesaver going to be? How are we going to help Northville schools stay afloat? It felt so stressful and worrisome. All of our candidate forums were on Zoom. We'd all show up and we'd see each other in these little screens, never really getting to meet in person at first, which was so weird then to all of a sudden be sitting next to each other on the table. But the community chose us, I think, because we, we really are supportive of the mission of staying focused on the excellence for the students of Northville. Over these past four years, each of you has been a champion for the children and families of Northville Public Schools. With your commitment to keeping our focus on what's best for students, we have significant, we, we have successfully navigated some significant challenges that came in our path over these past four years, most notably maintaining our academic excellence while navigating the return to school after the pandemic, our awesome sports teams, all of the amazing extracurricular activities that just kept going and going despite being on pause for a period of time. We've transitioned from our long-tenured superintendent to developing Dr. Weber, all while managing external pressures that threaten public schools, including funding instability and a teacher shortage. These have been challenging times. Jim, your guidance and leadership, particularly on the Finance Subcommittee, has really been invaluable. You've committed, you've consistently demonstrated a steadfast commitment to the integrity of the decision-making process. I know you've heard that from more than just me. Your vigilance in reminding us of the sacrifice that the district made to recover from the 5% fund balance to its current very healthy state ensures that those mistakes won't be repeated, leaving a lasting legacy for Northville Public Schools. Your mentorship has taught me crucial lessons about the importance of open and honest discourse. Through our thoughtful dialogue, we've reached better conclusions than we would have otherwise. For that, I appreciate you. Thank you also for holding us accountable to our agreements and reminding us that to be future-ready, we must also understand the highlights from the past. Your dedication to financial responsibility and open communication will have a lasting positive impact on our district. Sarah, I had to write this because if I just went off the cuff, I'd probably be crying, and I'm trying really hard not to do that. I want to express my, my immense gratitude for your unwavering passion and commitment to the best academic environment for our kids and safeguarding the rights of both students and staff. Your dedication to ensuring that Northville remains an exceptional place for learning and teaching is evident in the numerous relationships you've cultivated during your time on the board and the profound understanding you bring to our conversations. Your mentorship, particularly through the Policy Subcommittee and the Superintendent Search Process, has been invaluable to my growth as a leader and a developing board member. Through our collaborative efforts, you've become a trusted colleague and friend. The impact of your contributions to Northville resonate for years to come. I know it, and I can't wait to see what that will look like. Even as you leave the board, I know I can count on you as a trusted friend, someone I can turn to for perspective, kindness, and always humor when needed, as well as wise counsel as we continue to uphold Northville's tradition of excellence for our students. You will be missed, but your legacy I know will endure. And Lindsay, witnessing your growth over these past four years as a board member, and especially as board president these past two years, has been a tremendous honor. From our first meeting at the Amerman Dance Club 5K, that was a long time ago, when you and Jason were part of the, the OG crew, to working alongside you these past four years, it's been a true joy. Your calm and steady demeanor, even during difficult conversations, has been invaluable in guiding the board through challenging times. Your approach to fostering a strong working relationship between the board and superintendent, especially during RJ's first two years, has been instrumental in creating a positive environment for students and staff of Northville. Your note-taking is really incredible. I wish I learned how to do that, and I have really enjoyed sitting next to you, watching you in action. Your ability to synthesize diverse perspectives have helped us maintain focus and reach consensus as a governing body, which is a tremendous asset to both the district and the community. And you embody Northville spirit. You're consistently present at community events with your welcoming smile and a Northville hat, and that has really strengthened community bonds. Your mentorship to me has been crucial in preparing me to continue my own leadership journey. I can't believe I'm the one of the four of us still standing on the board. That's, that's a different hat for me to be anticipating wearing. I've already signed my oath, so we're good. Although I, no, I'm not rethinking it. I know, Lindsay, that you'll remain a trusted advisor and a confidant to me and other board colleagues, and really grateful for your consistent availability through texting, calling, whatever it takes, thoughtful partnership, and willingness to brainstorm towards solutions. Your unwavering commitment to mental health support for students and staff has been refreshing and vital, as the district continues to work to expand support services for kids and families amidst ongoing mental health crises. Your efforts will have a lasting impact on the Northville community. And I have to say, the three of you, we know that serving the community on the school board demands a high level of professionalism and the courage to grapple with a wide array of, wide array of issues that we don't always see eye to eye on. Some of these issues are more sensitive than others, and sometimes we can't talk about the impact on us in public. I think of the time when we sat in the township and we learned about the process of school shootings and how the police department sees that, and the lasting impact, and knowing that each of you had that experience too, and how that has forever shaped our connection to each other. Also, sitting on the school board requires poundless energy to consistently show up, well-prepared and ready to engage in the collaborative decision-making process that best serves the students of Northville. Doesn't matter what's happening in your personal life, doesn't matter what's happening in your professional life, you show up, you're here, you bring your all, and I'm so grateful. I appreciate how each of you celebrates our students and their accomplishments. And Jim, I hope I can borrow the cowbell. I'm going to need it this spring. I'm also deeply grateful for the humanity and compassion each of you brings to this form of community service. There are so many ways to serve a community, but this is a really special role. We've shared many joyful moments and some sorrowful moments along the way. Because of these strong, trusting relationships we've felt, built over these past four years, I simply want to express my gratitude. You've all done exceptional jobs, and I will so miss each of you. Only those who have served on the Board of Education truly understand the level of commitment and dedication required to serve a district of this caliber. So I thank you, each of you. I thank you for the ones that came before us and the ones that will come after us, and, and just my gratitude always. Hold on, before I'm done, I do actually have some trophies. I know that no one likes participation trophies, especially not Jim. However, this is an opportunity that everybody can have a trophy. So I found some trophies.
I just felt like we maybe needed some humor too.
There's for Lindsay. You participated, you well. Please share what your trophies say.
Oh, I know what it says.
Mine says, "I survived the drama."
Mine says, "It ain't easy being a badass."
Mine says, "This ain't my first rodeo."
So mine is going to be super short. I'm going to say ditto to everything, and expect something in writing, because I'm much better in writing than, you know, trying to choke my way through any of the amazing things that everyone's already said. And I want you guys to have lots of time, so go for it.
How about I go first?
Go for it.
In order of seniority here. So, I mean, I said it early, I, I'm going to, I'm going to blast through this so I don't get emotional, but it's just super fitting to be here in Amerman, where this all started for me and my family. Love these schools, love this building. When COVID popped around, I just felt, like you said, the need to jump in and try to do whatever I could to, to try to help and, you know, fight and protect these schools that we all believe so much in. I just want to go through a list of what we've done in the last four years. I mean, I, and this is just my four years. I mean, this is, this is standing on the shoulders of giants, you know, here in the audience and next to me, but we got through COVID. I mean, that is not, that is not any small task. We, we said goodbye to Mary Kay, we said hello to RJ, we said goodbye to Dave Rogers, we said goodbye to Mike Zoff, we said goodbye to Abdul, we said goodbye to Suzanne, we welcomed Kim, we welcomed our, our new board members. We said hello to a Young Fives program, we said hello to two new counselors at the high school, we said hello to two new SROs. We, we made a really tough decision around STEAM and world language. That was a super hard one, but we, what we did, it, we knew what we had to do, and we did it. We stepped up and did it. I, I feel like so much of what we all bring to the table is shaped by our personal experiences, right? And I think my, see, my daughter's struggles in high school kind of made me want to, and, and how she got so much use and help from her teachers and the counselors at the high school, that drove me wanting to, you know, let's, what can we do to bring in more counselors? And, and we were all right there. Angela, I know we were all, you know, really behind that. I've always thought and said, serving on a board should be required, not, not of every citizen, not because it's anything like military duty and, and you're, you know, it's a requirement to serve, but because of the eye-opening experience and the but because of the eye-opening experience and the inspirational experience you have from being in these buildings and inspired by the teachers that are teaching our kids and the building leaders who are leading those teachers. And I can be a pretty skeptical, you know, pessimistic person, but you walk into that kind of environment, and it's totally uplifting, and I love it for that. So many other folks have said it. I mean, this is a tough gig sometimes, but it's also awesome. The buck stops with the board oftentimes. You're tasked with making some pretty tough decisions. A lot of people can pontificate about it and give their opinions, but we have to make decisions as a board. And I appreciate everything that we've done together. Just a few words about each of you. Melissa, I'll start with you. Your warmth and your spirit, I love. Just the fact that you get broken up still during ABCD. And I want to thank you for inviting me to Troop 777, that was just really touching to me. I want you to know that. That was just this past summer. Karen, your sort of fire and diligence, you know, I really appreciate that about you. You know it's Monday morning when you start seeing Karen emails about. Honestly, my biggest thanks to you, though, is you captured those moments when I was hugging my own daughter on the stage. I think other folks got pictures as well, but I remember yours. And Jim, I remember when you hugged your daughter, Rachel, you know, at graduation, I got to do the same thing a year or two after that, and you got those pictures, so I'm eternally grateful for that. Kim, man, your desire to do good and just this wholesome way that you have about you, and, you know, you're just such a great shoulder to lean on, mind to pick, confidant. Your desire to do right for this community and to stand up, you know, the history behind it and the future. I love that about you. When we were tasked with making the decision on how to replace somebody who's pretty irreplaceable, Suzanne, to me, there was only one choice. So the community had spoke, and I'm so glad that we spoke and put you in that seat because you deserved it and you're the right thing for the community. Jim, I mean, people have said it. You put in so many years here, and it's great the years, but then you had the experience in those years, you know? And I have so many great memories of you. One is when we were all campaigning against each other. You'd think we'd all end up enemies at the end of it, but I show up at the high school with my sign, Jim shows up with his sign, and he's practically campaigning for me. I'd never met the guy really in person, but it was just such a great experience to have you sort of take me under your wing, and it was just like, it was just, I just want to say thank you for that. I also want to mention something that I think is one of your strongest attributes. You're, you just always had this thing about the board speaking with one voice, and you would sign on to votes and vote yes for things that I know you weren't behind. And so, and we all did that at points, but you more probably than anybody else, and I really appreciate that about you. Sarah, you know, you stood up and led us to the hardest times, the worst that I saw. You're unparalleled. It was truly an honor to sit with you as your vice president and learn and watch you and try to help. You bring, everybody else has said it, I mean, you bring such great ideas, you know, you really are a thought leader. But my favorite sort of memories of Sarah are a couple of things. One is when we were going through that crazy campaign, and I would come up with, you know, my notes, and I would, and, you know, and I'd have my thing prepared, and I knew what I was gonna say. And there was one particular moment at like a rally in a park where we were all supposed to give like 30 minutes, 30 seconds or a minute or whatever. We're kinda standing there, and Sarah comes flying out of nowhere, you know, she's late, and I kinda recognize, you know, the same sort of like parent, busy, busy kids, you know? And I'm just like sort of watching, and she just kinda fixed her hair and jumped in and gave this knockout speech in a minute about why the community should vote for her again, and she was right about that. And I saw you do that on Zoom calls where we'd be sort of in the wings, getting ready to go on for the public, and we could see each other on Zoom, right, the four of us and whoever else was running, and you'd just kinda like pop in out of nowhere, sort of fix yourself up, and then like deliver these knockout answers, and I'm like, wow, this is never happening for me. Like, this is never gonna happen. But honestly, truly, my actually favorite memory of you is at the Lava Grill in 2022. It was at one of our celebration kind of parties, and it was like, we all thought Mike Jafer was gonna be the DJ for the night, but Sarah busts up there and like takes over the DJ booth and is just like delivering bangers to the crowd, you know? And so that's sort of how, you know, DJ SP. Lisa, we started off, just like you said, sort of kinda competing in that race, right? And it was, it was a crazy race. The four of us were in it together, or the five of us were in it together. We sort of had the most similarities between the two of us, right? We were sort of, lived in the same neighborhood, kids roughly the same age. We're sort of new to Northville in the same way, you know? I think we had similar philosophies and things that we thought about bringing to the table. And, you know, we both, you had a knockout campaign. I mean, you crushed your campaign. You killed me in votes. I was the bigger person and got over that, and I liked that. I rose above. That was one of my growth moments. And I was able to get over that, but you and I sort of grew up on the board together a little bit. Like, we did our board book training together with Megan Irving. I mean, I wish she was here tonight so we could all say thank you to her. But Mary and Megan, Mary Kay and Megan led us through our board book training together. We visited Cook together. We toured it early on. You know, we shared those looks across the table, like, what is going on here? I don't know. Let's just keep, let's just keep moving forward. And we just kept taking on additional responsibilities and taking on things. And I've just really come to trust and rely on you and consider you such a good friend. I'm so happy that the board and the community has you, your continued dedication to doing this work. You're gonna be so good, and the board, the board, the next board is gonna be so great. I miss all of you already, and in the same way that I missed Angela when she left, and Roland when he left, and Mary Kay when she left, and Suzanne when she left, and like I said, Dave, Abdul, and people who've come and gone and who've left, you know, left their mark here in great ways. I go back to that notion of our experience informing what we do here. And I think about sort of what my kids went through when we first moved here, you know, 11 years ago. My kids kinda suffered through something, and my oldest daughter was a third grader here in this building. And the thing that gives me the most gratitude is knowing that this board and the next board and the cult team and the business and the building leaders that we have in place are there for kids. Like, my daughter was 12 years ago, and if a kid who is suffering through something like that, they'll have Beth Santa and her team, right? Erin, Sandra, you guys, Rebecca, Brian, on the HR, on the HR side. That doesn't even do justice to what you do, the way you, the professionalism, the constant availability on Fridays, Saturdays, Sundays, all hours, helping me work through problems. The building leaders at our elementary schools, Andrew and the ed tech team, keeping our technology running. I'm sure I'm missing folks. Devin, he's not here tonight, but, you know, there's so much riding on his shoulders, and I have a ton of confidence and trust in him that he'll oversee our finances and make sure that we have schools and food here and buses to get our kids back and forth to schools. Steve Banchero, I don't know if he's here, he's back there. I mean, he makes sure that the buildings that we send our kids to school in are top-notch and making sure that there's a future for them. I'm so heartened by the fact that there is that team, this team in place, to be there for my kids. I mean, you could say all you want about SAT scores and NWEA scores, but it's those kids in the middle or that are suffering from something or that have made some sort of mistake, and I just have such a degree of trust in this team and the board that they'll do right by that kid in that kind of instance. RJ, that leads me to you. I mean, I'm so jealous of you in so many ways. It starts with the fact that I wish I had in my life the, you know, that I, the passion and enthusiasm that you bring to the thing that you love in life and that you are made for. I'm still trying to figure that out, you know? I never was good enough at playing the drums or breakdancing or anything like that, that I could make those things work. So I'm immensely jealous of you, and the list doesn't stop there, right? I mean, it's your talent, your insight, your quick wit, you're funny. I just, I have a ton of respect for you, and you're on that list. Knowing that you're the superintendent here in Northville gives me great certainty and comfort and joy and trust. I, I'm not one to quote usually, but you are. You love the quotes. I couldn't really think of a really esteemed one, so I'm gonna paraphrase one that came to mind when I tried to think about you. "You are the music maker. You are the dreamer of a dream," right? That's how I sort of think about you, right? You're idealistic and you aim for the ideal. I'll close here. Wow.
Thank you.
I'm surprised the buzzer isn't going off for me. I, I mean, I just feel like I'm leaving this board in such good hands. The folks that will be comprising the board, the seven of you, I endorsed, supported, and fought for you, held your signs up. I'm so enthusiastic that you're gonna be on the board, and I love the fact that you are. I'm giving you, you know, all the best luck and trust that I can send to you. I also want to thank my own family who could not be here tonight. They've, you know, they know, you know, folks have said it, JJ said it, I think he's gone, but, you know, it does take a village to let somebody be a board member and to witness this and to see this, you know? Yes, I want to thank my family, but they're off at a basketball game tonight, like having the time of their lives. And Sarah, my wife Julie, just a couple of weeks ago, she's like, you know, maybe you want to find something to do on Tuesday nights, you know, to keep you occupied or whatever. I'm like, hey, what? I thought we were gonna spend all this time together. I don't know what that meant. Who knows? I just want to thank all of you for such a great run and wish you the best of luck. We are counting on you guys as the next board, those of you who will be on it. Lisa, Meredith, Ron, Jenna, Y C, Lisa, Kim, Karen. Thank you so much and good luck. Thanks, everybody.
Well, I didn't write anything. I too have traditionally said goodbye to people with a note card. It's hard to summarize. I've had some really beautiful moments on this board, like moments that I am just, I have enriched my life, and I think the teachers and the staff and Colt, you know why. It's because the kids drive you guys too. And so that opportunity to, I mean, one of the audience members tonight said it, like, listening to these kids presents to a room of adults, and they're like fifth grade, and they're they're just so articulate and their purity is so clear, and their eagerness for all that life has, you know, those have been the beautiful moments. The beautiful moments sometimes have been robotics and seeing the robot for the first time. They've seen peer pals and parents crying about what a difference that program has made to them. I've seen teenage boys who were very cool athlete-type kids, like, offering the like gentle hand of support behind the student that they've been peer mentors with. So it's been my, my honor. The worst moment for me was, we were getting on the COVID call, like the first one, it must have been like March 20th or so, and Mary Kay got on the line, and like the line had crashed because 1,000 people wanted to attend, and we were scrambling to get people reloaded on, and like at the time, Zoom didn't even, it's like, it was so new that like having such a large group was just, it wasn't even a thing. And I'm really glad to be the last person who is here on the board on March 7, 15 through the 20th, 2020. I hope I take some of that challenge with me when I go, and the community will leave all that behind. I think it has, and I think I'm really proud of this community and how it acted with care and professionalism for the very most part during those really challenging times. It was a testament to the community. Okay, Jim, I wouldn't be on this board if, in the first few meetings I came to, well, Roland and Scott Craig called me and said, would you want to be on the school board, and I laughed. Like, not, like, haha, yes, that'd be amazing, like, you're crazy. I have three tiny kids. I work in Birmingham. I'm a busy litigator. That's a crazy idea, and we hung up the phone and it incubated. But I wouldn't be on the board if I hadn't come to some of the meetings and seen the professionalism, and when I talk about standing on the shoulders of great people, the way that the tone was set. For the first couple of years on the board, I had no idea what the political view of like an Ann Kalis was or an Adam felt like. I didn't know how they voted in like presidential politics. I didn't know. I mean, Cindy, I didn't know. I mean, you guys, you didn't, it wasn't in the air, and you dealt with each other with such professionalism. Yes, Matt was the tiebreaker that put me on the board, and that kind of set, I mean, I don't know if he knew anything about, you know, what our politics would have been, but you all set this tone that when we come in here, we serve, and we serve kids, and that's not political. And every day since then, literally since before I was on the board, your class and professionalism, what people have talked about, about joining the vote or standing behind the vote, reminding us of our better angels in that way, is, has been, has set a tone that if you don't have, you can't be as effective, and that isn't gonna be recorded anywhere. There's no number to put on that. There's no way to value that, and nobody would say, well, what kind of candidate are you gonna, you know, as a candidate, are you gonna bring that in? You just brought it. And when you and Kim tied and she came onto the board, I don't think there's anything more professionally challenging that happened to anyone that I served with over eight or nine years than to, you know, have that put into your lap. And what I saw was kindness and professional courtesy and, you know, openness. I've seen you change your mind. I've seen you listen to people, come in with one perspective and change your mind. And that sounds so boring and small, but people don't do that, and you do that. And by doing that, you again set that tone of like, I may, you know, think I know, but maybe there's another way of looking at this, and I really admire that. And you have been a kind and decent and honorable person. Every single day that I've served with you, I want to thank Suzanne, Rachel, your son, your family, your mom is here. Rachel, your dad talks about you a lot, and he's learned, like we all do from our kids, what kids need, and he loves you very much, and Suzanne as well. Thank you for sharing him. Lindsay, being president two years in a row is, I don't think anyone's done that but you and me. And it's really hard, and you've done hard things coming in at a time when, I mean, it was the summer of, you know, there was a lot of stuff going on with race in the country. There was COVID. The district was in a very difficult situation. We didn't know if we'd come back and masks and all that, and you jumped in to that fray, and that's an incredibly admirable thing to do. And I think you've done it as president, right? Like, so seeing kind of like what would be the most steadying hand and the ballast for the board as a whole. And I think you've laid it out to deliver that and to show up and to be on point and to be that ballast and that steadying hand is, you know, it's something that the whole team needs, and certainly I need to, you know, perform at my best. And I, you know, I think without your, you know, leadership in that regard, I would not have been able to do what I did or any of us could have done what we did. So it's that individual. So it's that individual synergy that you brought that, that I most admire. I have had fun with you guys. I've um, I've laughed and I've cried and I've, I've had, you know, the time of my life. I'm not going to say much about running the district. I feel like I've left that all in the field. I, I don't feel like I have one more like iota of effort that I could bring, but I just, all I would leave you with is to do the next right thing every time. Thank you.
So I'm not going to try to repeat all of that stuff. But I want to go back. It's kind of funny. I, I looked at all these names we were talking about and I was here before a lot of them where I, I remember when I started, um, Len Rizmerzki was the superintendent. And uh, I was there for the vote uh, when, when uh, Mary Kay was elected and come on board till like June the following year. I like many, when I first came on board, I was like, I'm like, I don't know how I'm doing, right? It's, it's amazing. Joan Wadsworth was the board president at the time. Joan had spent six, spent 16 years on the board. Um, I, I made it to 12. God, I don't know how you make 16. That's just a lot. Um, Dottie Garrity, which some of you may remember, uh, Libby Smith, who's still around working with NEF, I think, was uh, was our secretary at the time and Joe Heid was our treasurer. Um, and uh, on the board with me was Ken Roth, right? Uh, who also was a 16-year veteran. When he finally left, he put 16 years in. I'm not sure how Ken did that either. And I think I replaced Marilyn Price, um, or, or Karen Pesorek. God, I don't remember how it worked. But it goes back a long time ago, but um, when I came on board, like I said, Len Rizmerzki was, was here. We, we brought on Mary Kay. I remember Mike Zoff coming on board and I remember Mike Zoff leaving, which is just kind of wild for me to say I was there at the beginning and, and they're there at the end. And, and for Dave Rogers, kind of the same thing. So it's, it's been a, a wild ride. I want to thank all of those former board members, many of them here, you know, Matt and and everyone here. I mean, it just, you guys have all put in so much time and effort. We are here today because of the seeds that people planted years ago, right? The efforts they put in. Um, I remember when Joan and Dottie and, and Libby, we were talking about IB and, and thank God for NEF donating money so that we could actually fund the beginning of IB. And now it's a full blown, blown program. I remember talking about and piloting um, Leader and Me at Moraine and look where we're at today. Leader and Me is at every single one of our elementary schools. We're, we're, we're Lighthouse District. We're, I don't know, what's the new one? Legacy District. I mean, you name it, we conquered it. We, we are by far the biggest district, I think, from IB anywhere. And look what it's done for our kids. We've planted some, some seeds recently in STEM. We planted some seeds with AI. We planted some seeds with uh, with uh, language and that. And so what I would ask the current board members that are still here and the future board members are, are going to come is follow the process, the process, the process, the process. The process is a pain in the ass. It really is. But taking those steps to gather the community input, finding where they're at, having lots of debates. I respect Sarah so much because we always came at things from different sides of the perspect, of, of the spectrum. And she would argue points and I would argue points. And at the end of the day, I would learn something in the process. And as a district, those debates ultimately led us to better decisions and we were better off a, a, as a district because of those kind of debates, right? So follow the process, take the extra time, as painful as it is, gather the community input. Dialogue with the community. Make sure you're communicating, communicating, communicating. If you do those things, you will bring the community with you. Life will be so much easier. Every year, some bizarre thing pops up and, and causes a problem. I don't know what it's going to be you're going to face next year, but you will face it. If you remember anything, remember the process, the process, the process. Take your time. I'll also say for existing people and the new board members is plant your seeds. I don't know what they're going to be, um, but you need to, during your course on the board, figure out what are those one or two things you can think that can take us from where we are today into the future, right? Plant those seeds, nurture them. IB, you, you kind of, oh wow, you know how many years it took us to nurture IB from a thought, from a dialogue to where the hell are we going to get the money from doing some training and building it? And even now IB's 40, 50 students? Oh, 60. Okay. It continues to grow, right? But you need, you need to plan long-term. You need to plant those seeds. You need to nurture them. You need to kind of stay consistent. Listen to your community. We are a, this is an interesting community. It's a challenging community. We're a very intelligent community, highly educated. I mean, everybody in our district, all the parents are, you know, multi, multi-degrees, right? Pretty darn smart. They're financially very strong and successful and they want the best for their kids. They bring incredible technical business and legal skills to it and that. Listen to your community. If you listen to your community, you'll get there. And then those, I guess, are on my closing comments, I thank each one of you, right? For what you have brought to the district. This is not an easy job. Never has been, never will be. But it's because you care. And I know my wife, she laughs about this story, you know? When uh, our daughter was in first grade, there was an issue and she says, well, we, we, we're not going to get into the Catholic school because we were too far down the waiting list. And she says, you know, we need to get involved. Six months later, she said, damn it, I said, get involved. I didn't say get elected, right? And it, it's truthful. It is, it's funny. Now I laugh about it, but that's kind of how it started, right? But I thank each of you for getting involved, for giving your time. Um, I've watched from four years ago, you know, some of the, some of you were new in that and you've grown so dramatically. I've seen leadership build in you. Don't be shy. Utilize it. Um, and we will be, be a great district going into the future. And I'll just say is, you know, some of my proudest moments, there's lots of proud moments, but some of the best things I remember are uh, after all of those years of being poor and not having any money and, and getting our first bond approved and finally building Old Village School and launching Old Village School was kind of a really cool thing. From where Matt Wilk knows we were at, we were on the verge of bankruptcy and calling, you know, they, they were talking about calling in someone from the state to, to kind of oversee us and that. But to come out of it and be there was really a proud moment for myself, a lot of Ford mem, former members, Angela, Matt. I mean, it was kind of an awesome experience. And then um, you know, my daughter, uh, who, why I got involved, right? She was in first grade at the time. What are you going to do? But seeing her come across the stage and being to hug her on stage, drink coffee. They go like, oh, you can't touch any kids. And I'm like, the hell with that. I'm not going to touch, this is my daughter. I'm going to hug her big time. You can sue me later. But greatest thing in, in a dad ever experiences. So I thank every single one of you. I think the community members who called me up on the phone. You know, people like, how do you deal with people calling you and complaining? And, and honestly, how can you be mad at a parent who cares so much about their kid that they want to fight for them, right? I'm going to listen to that every single day of the week, if that's our biggest problem, that we've got so many parents who care about their kids so much. They're, they're willing to go to the wall for them. And that's why we're a great community, right? If we listen to those parents, kind of have those big debates, we'll, we'll find the right answer by following the process. And Sarah, uh, like Matt said, we, we disagreed on a lot of things, but you don't know how much I respected you for our dialogues and things. And I always thought, you know, when I change my mind, I'm like, you know what? I learned something today. I'm a better person for it. And I challenge every single one of you, have those debates, listen to what the other person says, be willing to listen. So thank you all. This is my last board meeting. I've been involved in the district for 14 years. And it's just wild to be here. Um, I thank my family for giving me up for all of those years. Uh, trust me, I'll figure out something to do on Tuesday, Lindsay. Thank you all. Goodbye.
All right. We get back to our agenda? We was on track.
We, we can't go to the bar now. We got more. Lindsay, you're a driver.
All right. Well, that brings us to number 10 here on our agenda, I believe.
Is it number nine?
Okay, our second of two opportunities for public comment tonight. I don't have any cards up here. Public comment going once, going twice, that will close. And bring us to number 10, our new hire. I'll turn it over to Ms. Meyer.
Yes, I'm very excited to bring forward motion 58 that the board award a one-year probationary NEA teacher contract to Yvonne Shampoo. That was one of my emails on Monday, uh, for the 2024, 25 school year as presented.
All right. So we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer and supported by Mr. Missouri.
Thank you, President Wilson. Tough act to follow, but uh, nonetheless, we are excited to uh, recommend uh, Yvonne Shampoo to the board this evening. Um, she would uh, help to round out our Cook staff, um, after a recent departure here at the beginning of November. But uh, Yvonne, this is actually her second career, started out in the automotive industry. Um, and during the COVID pandemic, uh, you know, encountered uh, some of the, the challenges that many of our industries uh, throughout the, the country did and um, started subbing and just fell in love with uh, with working with students and education. And began to pursue her um, her teaching certificate. Uh, she uh, comes to us with uh, a pursuit of a master's uh, at Eastern Michigan. Um, and a Bachelors of Science in Business Administration, consistent with her first uh, her first uh, career. Uh, as I said, she found a niche uh, in working with students with emotional impairments. Um, and unsolicited and speaking with two of her uh, references. Um, they both shared how calm uh, her presence is, uh, the impact that she has. Uh, and just de-escalating behaviors, uh, something that is so critical and working with our students at Cook. And they also uh, shared uh, just her reflective nature, her um, overall desire to receive feedback and be responsive to it. Characteristics that obviously we want uh, here for our staff. So our interview team was uh, very impressed with Yvonne and we're excited to recommend her here for hire this evening.
No, I mean, I just think it's amazing that you're able to find a candidate um, in November. So thank you very much for doing that. We're very excited to have her.
I was going to say the same thing. Congratulations on finding someone mid-school year. It's amazing.
All right, let's officially uh, welcome Ms. Shampoo here. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's give her a hand. Ms. Shampoo. All right, that brings us to our bid award number 11 and I'll turn it over to uh, Dr. Campbell Voitel, please, our treasurer.
All right. All right. I bring motion 59 that the board award, A, contracts totaling 16,000, 2, 16,258,776 dollars as outlined in the OAK construction recommendations dated November 27th, 2024, funded by the 2023 bond and the building site sinking fund. And B, contracts totaling 168,935 dollars as outlined in the OAK construction recommendation dated December 12th, 2024, funded by the 2023 bond and the building sinking fund as presented. Woo, support.
All right. So we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel and supported by Ms. Prescott. Background.
Uh, good evening. Um, just want to say as a community member, um, thank you for the outgoing board members. Volunteering, well, you ran, but you also volunteered for this position. It's not easy. We're facing a lot of criticism from the community. But it's acts like this that make the district so great. I spent a lot of years, 20 years watching other boards and how they operate. And you know, it's an honor to be in this community and have people like you serve the district. So thank you for that. Um, tonight, again, is a bid award for meats. We covered it at the committee of the hall. I don't know if there's any additional questions. I think it, when I covered it before, there was two bid categories that uh, we did have bids on. We have since received those. Um, they are part of the second part of the award tonight. So I'm here to answer any questions.
Meats milk. Any other questions? We did cover this uh, last week.
Yeah, we just did it in the committee of the hall, went through it. This is one we've been talking about meats milk for a year and a half now and you know, we, we put these bids out. We started talking about these six, eight months ago. So this is just kind of a culmination of the process.
It's such a point of pride to me to get to, I'm really glad I got to vote on this and, and have this brought forward. I mean, I um, think a few, a handful of us here used to sit in the weird auditorium. I can't even remember what it was called, the hole or something terrible like that. What was it called?
The pit.
The pit. So I was pretty close, right? I mean, like the pit of despair from, you know, there were some beautiful moments in it, but it's gone. And to see what you're going to do next, I can't, I just can't wait. And I, I really appreciate uh, getting to be part of this and uh, your, your leadership on it, Steve.
Thank you.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations on that bit award and that takes us to number 12, our 2025 playground updates. I'll turn it over again to Dr. Campbell Voitel, please.
All right. These are playground upgrades at Ammerman, Thurton Creek and Ridgewood Elementary. So I am pleased to bring motion 60 that the board authorized, that the board authorized the administration to award contracts totaling 773,314 dollars as referenced in the OAK construction recommendation dated December 12th, 2024 for the 2025 playground upgrades at Ammerman, Thurton Creek and Ridgewood Elementary. Support.
All right. So we have a motion properly presented by Dr. Campbell Voitel and supported by Ms. Meyer. Uh, any background commentary? We, we covered this last week as well, right?
We did not actually cover this at the committee of the hall. Um, just the timing of it, it didn't work out. The process, um, it's the same process we used for the 2024 playground upgrades. Um, we gave the bidders a budget. They came to us with their designs. We had the uh, building teams evaluate those designs and pick the one they thought was the best fit for their building. Um, so there was a couple of alternates within uh, the bidding documents. You'll see that in the recommendation. Um, but it was pretty much a set budget that we gave the bidders. So there was, uh, so the three upgrades, I think that we gave you some examples in the uh, recommendation letter. So this work would happen in um, summer of 25.
I think it's so great. I, going to um, the board meeting at Silver Springs and then at Manchester and part of the like kids presentation was about how amazing the, the new playground is and the spinneys and like all. So I'm just excited for every school to have that same, like, come to school on the first day and oh my gosh, there's a new playground. And I'm just super excited to see it. I'm still trying to get to a school and actually get to play on the playground. Because every time we go, it's at night and you can't, can't, you can't play on a playground, right? Come on. So I'm excited to, to visit every playground and test out the swings and vote on which ones are my favorite. So.
So I think in regards to the Ammerman um, segment of the um, of the discussion is that um, we have a tradition at Ammerman for in-house fundraising for this, for this improvements to our playground. And that is something that we're very grateful for. But as I understand it and recognize in these pictures that, that this um, particular project is going to be for the kindergarten playground.
Correct.
And so that hasn't been touched and it is indeed in need of, of uh, upgrading. So thank you very much for finishing that last piece for us.
I thank Jenna for all the work that she did and. I thank Jenna for all the work that she did and in the previous year to raise the money to address the other playgrounds. It was a huge help.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you mentioned that. I'm glad you mentioned her, Ms. Davis, because I know that's not why you're here. Surprise. Because what I really appreciate is not only did she work so hard to get the playground going, but that you worked so hard to support the bond and with such grace when we came forward, you know, and went, got able to do this for all of our playgrounds. So really appreciate all the work that you did because I think that says a lot that not only did you get the work to get the playground done here, but that you helped so that it happened to all the schools. So thank you.
Yeah. Well, it's an important point about, and when we're talking about this, but trying to get consistency, why, you know, let's not have one school because they can raise more money, you know, be different from another. And so we need to kind of fund this to balance it out. And, you know, the uniqueness of this process of setting a, a target and then working with the individual schools to say, okay, here's the target, here's what the options are, what best fits. I mean, makes a lot of sense because again, there is a lot of equipment that is there at, at some schools and it's still really good. So how do we not rip everything out, but how do we just add to it? And I saw the, the uniqueness of how you did it these last two times, I really like it as a, as a process because it builds on what we already had and did allow the individual schools to have some input to say, well, what, you know, best fits? I, I kind of laugh. I, I look at Thornton Creek in here and the, the kindergarten area was like, God, I remember that kindergarten area when my daughter was there. We're, okay, she's been gone a few years from the high school. So that stuff lasted like 16 years. It is about time that we replace it. So I love the process. Thank you for the efforts. Thank you for how you involved each of the schools in selecting the, the equipment.
All right. Any other questions or comments? All right. Those, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Congratulations on passing those playground update upgrades.
Mr. Wilson, I'm so sorry to interrupt, but I, I hope Mr. Banchero can get home. And I just, there was a comment from the public that was around lighting the crosswalk at Northville High School, which someone sent me a picture of what it looks like in some sort of place where it exists. And it looked like, kind of almost like there was a light embedded in the, literally in the street to, you know, essentially provide a little bit more knowledge that there's actually a crossing there. And because the students are walking or biking in, in the dark, especially in the mornings, it was raised. And I just said I would raise it. And so I didn't know if you were going to sneak out. I hope you do. But, you know, it's something to think about. I'm sure that's a 25-year project with Wayne County, so we might as well get started now. No, no shade to Wayne County, but I'm also really excited for the left turn lane to happen someday. And we started that in like 2020 at the latest. So maybe something like Jim was saying, a seed to plant there for safety.
All right. No good point. Next board. All right. That brings us to number 13.
Yes, I would like to bring forward a motion number 60 that the board adopt the Protect My Kids bill package tobacco resolution as presented.
Support. Can you just modify it though, that I think it's motion 61?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Yes, I really need to consistently wear my glasses when I read. Support.
All right. So we have a motion properly presented by Ms. Meyer and supported by Ms. McIntyre. And this is another item that we discussed at our committee of the whole last week. I'm not crazy on that one. Any comments on that?
I think it's in regard to packages that they're trying to get through lame duck. And I think it either went through the, the package bills went through the House and maybe it was similar in a package that went through the Senate, but I don't know when they're wrapping up the session for the year.
I think it's Wednesday.
That's not working.
Thank you. So that was the last that I heard was that Monday. So I don't know if they'll go to Tuesday. So I don't really have an answer for you right now.
When you say that Monday, you mean next Monday?
Yeah.
Oh, the 22nd, 23rd? 23rd? I should know. I'm having a party at my house that day. The 23rd, okay.
That's what I heard.
Okay.
They're going to convene, but, and that's the Senate.
Is it, but did, but did you hear relative to the, this package that had passed out of the House or?
I don't want to say this with confidence, but I believe that it has.
Okay, yes.
Because I, I received a phone call today that said, when this resolution passes, which I'm going to ask some of you to stay behind to sign some things. I'd like to fax it up to MASP and to the Senate.
Okay. And just some details, it's relative to selling vaping products to children?
It is. So, so as we discussed last week, you know, this, this package of bills will, you know, kind of establish license requirements for nicotine and tobacco retailers, establishing fines and penalties, something that currently is not in place. The flavors, that, that, that I know we talked a lot about last week. It seems so silly to me, but the flavors that, that are being marketed to our youth include the most popular, which is bubble gum, blue raspberry, grape blow pop. I, I mean, I don't know adults that are looking to, to consume that. Maybe there are some, but it definitely is marketing to, 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 to young people. In addition, this is also going, this package of bills will allow local communities to establish, to regulate that and establish some, some rules around it for their locality. And I know we talked about that last week. This is going to give the township and the city additional opportunities to manage places that are perhaps selling to, to minors.
That's the part I'm really looking forward to partnering with our township and our city just to really start, you know, start to use those connections in a really positive way to support our kids. We're already, you know, we're, we're dealing with this at the high school, we're dealing with this at the middle school, and I think that we could really be a leader in the state to reduce that access to our kids.
Yeah. I mean, just to paraphrase a couple paragraphs from the resolution, I mean, it stresses the importance of protecting the health and wellbeing of Northville youth, ensuring a healthier future for our students by reducing the availability of tobacco, regulating out the flavored tobacco products that are specifically designed to appeal to youth, and allowing localities to enact tougher restrictions and making these products less accessible to the youth in our community. Basically going on to support the Michigan, protect Michigan Kids Bill package and urging the Michigan Senate Committee Regulatory Affairs to begin hearings on these bills as soon as possible. It's a, it's a lengthy resolution. It will be there for the public to review, but that's sort of the end of the nutshell, I think. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you. I just want to say thank you to Ms. Peck for all, for work on that, quick work and turnaround. Thank you.
All right. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That passes. Thank you so much for that. And that brings us to number 14 on our agenda, our superintendent's 2023-24 evaluation report. So I bring motion 62 that the superintendent's evaluation for the 2023-24 school year be approved as presented.
Support.
All right. So we have a motion properly presented by myself and supported by Dr. Campbell Voitelle. I'll note that we conducted the superintendent evaluation last week at length of several hours, two to three hours or more. We talked through the, the, the rubric categories that include governance, let me just find them, so I'm not speaking totally off the cuff, governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, instructional leadership. We went through line item by line item, the, the categories that are laid out per those topics. We arrived at consensus scores and ratings for each of those topics and then a total. We also talked, and, and we talked at length, probably more importantly, about each of those. And we arrived at, we also talked about and addressed and assigned scores for professional practice, student growth, progress toward district-wide goals. We arrived at a total score 96%. That translates into an effective rating. So there, that, that's sort of, you know, the rubric. But I think more importantly was the discussion and the half dozen or 10 or so, whatever it was, I think it was eight actually, pieces of feedback with some points to each about opportunities for, for growth and improvement and where to go in the future and how to handle these evaluations in the future. Anything that I missed that's just a quick summary?
The only thing I want, we talked about before is that, in case anyone's really in the weeds on this, is that this superintendent evaluation tool was modified to reflect the new teacher law. So it doesn't have the highly effective category anymore. It just has the effective category, which is also what is the evaluation for teachers. So if anyone, you know, is being comparative to last year, the categories are the same, but they don't, there's, there's three instead of four.
Hope I think you summarized it.
All right. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Excellent. That brings us to our number 15 on our agenda, our superintendent's contract. So I bring motion 63 that the board approve the superintendent's contract extension effective July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2028, on the terms and conditions as presented.
Support.
Okay. So we have a motion properly presented by myself and supported by Ms. McIntyre. Any commentary or questions around the superintendent's contract, the red line? Thank you, Ms. Peck and team.
No, only for the public, right? We have a standard practice. We have a three-year renewing contract as long as a, a superintendent is effective or I can't remember the other, what's the middle column? Because we change it. But anyways, as long as he's effective, we, we continually, we add a, a third year each year. So this is kind of a standard practice that happens every single year. It's really nothing new and all we're doing is updating the contract to change the dates accordingly. His compensation will be discussed at the end of this school year in the May-June timeframe, and that'll be handled by our next board.
Well said. Anything else? Any other questions, comments? Did I hit everything? Did we hit everything, Ms. Peck? Yep. All right. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Motion passes. Thank you on that. And that brings us to number 16. Any added agenda items? This makes me wish that Ms. Irving was here. Miss her. Wish her the best on her vacation. Everyone should have a Megan Irving in their life.
Truth.
World would be a better place. All right. So any items? All right. That brings us to, I think our, we'll call it our second opportunity for public comment, going once, going twice. Questions, comments from board members? This, some of us, is your final shot.
I just want to thank you guys for what you did tonight, your words and your, the gifts, but especially for your friendship and your support.
I agree. It's been a pleasure working with all of you. And like I said, I mean, I've seen the growth. You guys have the, the right skill set. Devote the time and help our new board members come, come up to speed as well and keep us in good hands.
Well said. I'm really going to miss everyone in this room, every folks like, like you all who've been in these rooms and thank you so much for the opportunity. Good luck to the next board and good luck to Colt and our building leaders and teachers. Thank you so much. Anything else?
Nope.
All right.
Happy holidays to everyone.
Happy New Year.
Break, enjoy your break.
We're so close, teachers. You can make it.
Board school days, right?
Next meeting back is January 7th at OBS, and that'll be our organizational meeting.
Oh, yeah.
And we'll do our, like, official oath with, I think Mayor Turnbull is coming that night. So we'll kick off 2025 with different faces around the table. Yeah. It'll be, and really a pleasure.
Yes, it has been.
Absolutely.
Past two years.
And it's flown.
Has flown. All right. On that note, we'll adjourn at 9:40. Thank you.
Cool. You gonna swing the gavel?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. All right.
There you go.